They're on that table over there.
You're going to watch the dentist?
Oh, yeah.
I have to read that.
Just three holes down. No, I figured for the.
Yeah.
January twenty sixth.
A little.
Everybody.
So that.
Well, fine.
Thank you.
We're being made my part of this. You got one?
Grand a little bit.
Did anybody say that they were?
Oh, you know, we're saying something. Uh, raisins. Raisins. So, um, but they're not very good. Send, but we are down, um, look at it.
Anyway. I thought raisins not an alternate anymore because the resolution was.
I don't know whether they got fitted or not.
They, I don't think they got.
No, I thought that in their original meeting they did it.
No, because Kathy got them. No. You asked the nurse and said, she said.
Okay. So.
Patrick Barrows, because he's not even here.
We go on and spread.
Right, yeah. Okay, so. Whenever, everybody ready? Okay. Okay. We're gonna open the meeting. Does that, does anybody want to?
I. Those are these to the flag, the United States of America. It's usually regarded, which says, one nation, oh my gosh, in this call. Is that ready?
Okay, now that we're, we're open, I mean, it's our own territory. Is, is served tonight as a voting member. Okay. If the first, all in favor? Aye. Okay, emergency exits, I've been asked to point out that way and that way. Right.
Don't try and.
Oh, then we know. For. Now. Okay. All right, okay, um, this is my first meeting here, so. Get with me. It's like. So. On the agenda, the first item is Salerno. You guys get public comment for your planning board? Really? As. But what would be the purpose of having public comment before an application?
And the purpose of the public comment is to tell anybody that is not here for.
Look, no, that I know, but I'm just asking, so.
So that they can talk. Should I have a minute or two to?
Okay, so, so from a, so.
So they could talk about maybe the, there's too much salt being dropped down by.
It can't be for, it can't be for, uh.
It can't be for an application. Right, it can't be for an application that's been either closed, a public hearing has been closed or not open.
No, it's for general questions that aren't related to any.
Does it apply to more than that? Okay, listen, I'm gonna go with the flow.
Anybody have?
So I apologize, Salerno, you're off the table for a moment. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak? I get it, is there anybody here who wishes to speak in general, or are you all here for applications? Okay, so I make a motion to open the public comment period. Okay, all in favor, aye, I make a motion to close the public hearing. So I'm making the public comment in a second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, public comment is closed. And then, any problems? No. Okay. Next item on the agenda will be Salerno, application number twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four fourteen. Okay, um, is there somebody on the board who is familiar with this application and would like to give us a brief summary? It's not a best poll. Paul, would you be kind and give us a quick summary of why they are back before the planning board?
Yes, the planning board had referred Mr. and Mrs. Salerno to the zoning board of appeals, which was presumably for an error of errors per side yard setback. Uh, the zoning board of appeals made a determination that no, uh, setback was required. Uh, they did not need to obtain a variance and that they were referred in error and they, uh, did not hear the case and they sent it back to the plan.
And if you're familiar, Tracy, I'll try and put some of this in. Sure, cool, okay. I might be.
So. So now the application is back before us. Did you, do we have their application somewhere?
It's on the drive, yeah. Their application.
I'm just trying to get familiar with it because I'm getting older.
It's the garage, right?
Yeah, the accessory apartment, what they exist under.
No, I don't remember, I don't remember where I have the surface.
Is it the accessory apartment or officially AD?
It's AD. What's that?
Yeah, I know, that's right, that's what I thought, that's the.
No, he's asking you what's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Accessory brought in. Which I think is.
I don't think it's.
It's just, it's no difference.
Right, but I think, uh, I think that that's how it's officially, uh, referred to in the code.
I think you.
I didn't know when you were in Italy dead.
You do?
Can you, how, how much does this allow you to?
A lot, I sense I get rid of it.
So that's fine, and everybody, so. I, I apologize for what I'm gonna ask some things, I'm questioning you guys, don't, in general, about functioning, so you guys do not have any hard copies on the table, you purely just work with?
We work with the.
You wanted to say.
Said some time, we were explaining what you guys, what you're doing here and you went to the, to the zoning board of appeals.
Correct, we were first, before you guys, before, uh, for the accessory department, it's gonna go above the garage, there is an updated site plan, right?
Yeah, I just did this one.
Yeah, I know you guys requested, uh, labeling of the accessory apartment, uh, it is gonna, it'll occur right over the garage.
Jacob, there's a pointer on the tape. Right here, right by the thing, so. Just hold it down.
So, um, so I, I mean, yeah.
Yep, so, uh. The, uh, Millbrook Avenue, this is the driveway that goes up to the existing garage there, uh, the accessory apartment is to be constructed above the garage, uh, removing the roof and then, uh, completing the second story for the living quarters and that area, uh, the garage structure itself will remain a garage, uh, as it is right now. I know you guys had, um, asked for an update, there is an updated site plan, I mean, that email to Maggie or, uh, Chris, nobody have done it, um, actually labeling that with the accessory apartments last garage, so there is an updated, uh, for your best request, uh, they should be.
Yeah, the apartment south over the garage a little bit.
Yeah, yes, yeah, two foot overhang on the floor, uh, six foot on the.
Trying to get to the second page is, because it shows the, um, the whole layout.
So let me ask you a question, how do you have, I mean, and this is a board sort of, Joe, how do you have this labeled in your file? Like in your, in the drive? Okay, so we're gonna come up with a tree structure.
So it's, it's under, okay, file applicant submission and then they're here by date that it was put on the drive. Or sometimes I've put if there's multiple that it's for a specific need. So.
Okay, so. Okay, so, yeah. I believe.
So the last time we were here, I believe it was, uh, all the criteria that met, other than the request for the variance, the, um, to believe that, uh, the variance is gonna be, uh, possibly be needed because it'll be changing the use of the structure. Something else in existing garage, again, like, um, Mr. Tomos explained, uh, before the ZBA, as they determine that no. No, I'm sorry, Michael, is this working or? Okay, um, that we went before the ZBA and that they determined that, um, you know, no variance was required, as if it was going for the existing structure.
Okay, so did you, from Maggie, I, I guess, I mean, does anybody on the board need to see the, the drawing?
So, so, from my understanding, and this is one of the reasons that we, you know, it's, it's been expedited by having the planner here because they would have already gone through everything and they had the checklist of what was required next.
Okay, so we'll, we'll find that, we'll get that to the, to the first declaration that we got with this.
So, because we've already seen, seen all of this and everything.
That's what I'm saying.
I don't think we had any more questions. And it was just whatever the planner had said, we need this on, we need this on the, on the site path, whatever, and if all those checkboxes have been checked.
Okay.
We should be good to go to the determination.
Okay, so that's why I'm asking you whether you, because this has already been before the board, so that's why I'm saying, do you really, do you need to see?
I don't.
Does anybody need to see?
No, because we've, we've seen it, we've asked all of the questions, we've been through that before.
So the EAF. Has already. I'm assuming that you already did the EAF originally when the application was.
The EAF?
The environmental assessment board.
They didn't, they didn't do part two or three because they were waiting for it to come back from the ZBA, so they don't do it generally until after the public hearing. And they don't have it after the public hearing, except they refer them to the ZBA.
Okay, so then, so then let's just open up part two.
Right.
Let's move right to the EAF.
Yeah.
Unless anybody on the board has any objections.
Okay.
So same thing, I'm just trying to get used to how you guys work and, and then, so. So normally. You know, we would just make a quick run through on this.
Yeah, that's generally what they've done and.
Why do you get a long form?
It's not.
Yeah. So going back, yeah, that's why I was wondering, looking why they don't want the long form, so. I mean, when you said.
Well, all you look, let me just ask a question fresh, so we insist the garage is existing.
Correct.
And you're adding this, a double or bone below the top, okay, so. And we had requested a, a, a side yard, even when the garage was existing, therefore it's not required, the side yard is existing.
Correct.
And do we, okay.
If. Okay, so.
Are square feet is again?
You have a short.
Uh, five hundred and.
Five hundred and ninety-three, obviously the long form what I do.
Got it, thank you. I'd rather. So when we get, when we get the planning, the planner's comments, it's a whole list that we just, we get ones and look at it and see which part.
Okay, but, but it's gonna be similar to now, I mean, when we get to the five blocks.
This is amazing, so there is a planner's comment, and I know from the twenty-fourth of October, I guess.
Okay, sorry, you pull that up. Okay, thank you.
What's the date on the reverse and the look on?
Uh, the twenty-fourth of September. So there it is. And this, just so you know, the traditional process, the planner sends it and then I schedule send it to go to the applicant the morning of the meeting, like, somebody. Or the consultant, whoever's.
And they get it drawn, and they get it once.
As soon as it comes through.
Usually there is a brief, there's a meeting to finalize it, it's usually like two days before and so it doesn't really get sent, so, yeah.
Okay, but those are all the things that we're looking to sort of.
So sure, it can, can send, can get sent whenever the board says it's ready to send. I just follow when the board has.
Just so the public isn't confused by our conclusion?
Well, the other.
We're, we're trying to restructure and become more efficient, so you're in the process.
The other thing that wasn't sent earlier is so that the applicant wouldn't think they started dressing things and starts a really new stuff.
I would like to think, we'll, we'll go through that.
Okay, so, I, I, can you, can you just? So, if you guys, you as a board have not seen this letter from.
Well, we have.
You have, okay.
In the previous, previous.
In the previous, okay, so.
And if you just, you can see their comments, so we can just scroll through and see if there's anything that hasn't been met. That, that.
Not sure, I don't, not see her.
No, I've got to see her up.
She's unlisted, but one was. Yeah, because of the historic district close by, it needs to be unlisted.
Setting of the district.
Um, well, let's address that issue.
We did. We did.
What was the determination?
The issue of the historic district, it said it wasn't visible.
It wasn't visible, yeah, because it's gonna be.
Within a hundred feet back to this vegetation.
Right, and because the garage is already there, this is just on. Garage, so we had said no problem with that.
But you can go back up to the site plan to ask, just, just wondering, so, so these are the two things that you added to the site plan, or is it?
Yes, uh, density control.
Or was that added at a previous meeting?
Well, the density control schedule, that's up there along with the, the topo, and then just at the last meeting again was the labeling of the accessory apartment above the garage, which was.
So that's.
Was taken care of, you have that open address and taken care of.
Go back, Maggie, a little bit more down so I can read that review paragraph.
And I updated.
Wait, in form?
I updated, uh, the form for that. And that was prior, the last meeting. Um, with the disturbances, which was seventy point zero zero degree, period of two, all that had been revised and.
And why is the public hearing required?
This is, keep in mind, you guys have already looked at this and some of this has already been done.
Okay, so.
Fire the public hearing and it was done. Before.
Right, we completed.
Yeah, so you wouldn't have to reopen your public hearing, also.
Did we have the, we had the public.
And, and then what you're, you're telling me is that you guys determined that this was a type two action, right?
No, unlisted.
Unlisted.
S one.
What's that we had there?
Well, I, I did a draft of, um, part three, what I thought was a part two, so I'm just checking on the drive to see if we get, just to drive it home. Um, and I did a draft termination, which I sent all this around last week, for review by you with this.
Okay, so. I mean. Is everybody okay? We just walked through very quickly a short form?
Yeah.
Okay, so we know what the project is, I'm not gonna reference that short form, so on the, on the short form, does the proposed action involve any legislative action? Does the proposed action require a permit or a full bill from any other government agency, Andrew? No, because. So it goes name, one is total acreage in the site, we'll fill that in, the land, we classify it on the site.
Does other agencies open it up?
So it means board health. Oh, it just said yes, it doesn't change anything, it's just a board of health. Um, is the permitted use, is the use permitted, yes, is it consistent with comprehensive plan? Yes, uh, so, but that would be what I would say, yes, is the proposed action consistent with the genomic character of the existing building and the area? Yes, residential property, residential zone, but is the site proposed within four G, it will form by an annual area? I don't think so, here, okay, so those are the. Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in front there? Say no. Any public transportation available? Yes, are there pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes near the proposed? I don't come to site, so. Yeah, okay, so there's questions, is, is there like a walk path or a bicycle lane there? Probably not, right? I just don't know where that broke.
Yeah.
Uh, will this proposed action meet or exceed the energy code? Yes, because it's going through Paul, will the proposed action connect with an existing public water supply? No, because it's.
Yes.
Oh, it is on public water supply then?
It's on the.
Oh, you're on, okay.
No, that's, that's incorrect, it's not private, private.
Private, yeah, it's a private water supply.
That's fine.
Will the proposed actually connect to an existing wastewater in charge of that as an L? Does the project site contain or substantially continues to a building or archaeological site or district on the national or state park register? Is the proposed site or any portion located or adjacent to any area designated as sensitive archaeological and shical? No. Does a portion of the site of the proposed action or land adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies? Do we approach on any existing ones? No. Identify the type of habitat, so it's suburban for our area, I would say.
Right, yes.
Does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animals or associated habitat? Yes, so I don't know where your Indiana bats are here, but I don't know, did you do the?
Yeah, it's not.
Okay, so there.
It does say.
And I'm going to ask, what?
The form says the northern Longyear bat.
It popped up, it came in the.
Shows up on the, yes.
Shows up on the mapper? So I was just asking whether.
When it was in the form, it says the northern Longyear bat.
I'm saying it's in.
State federal dominance.
There's, there's no land clearing being proposed.
So, so it doesn't matter, yeah, so, so basically, when you write, when you have, when it shows up on, you just basically have to limit the, the timeframe for, to taking down trees. So that you're not doing it during their meetings. So that's why, it's, it, you can say yes and still it, it doesn't, it doesn't impact your decision. Okay. So we know it's not close up or, or next to an active. And the proposed action, is the proposed action or an adjoining property subject of origination or not? So that completes. Would anybody like to make a motion about whether or not you. Negative.
Oh, well, I, I was just trying to make a motion to classify the seater and, um, unlisted.
You already did that.
Did you do it already?
Yeah, you did it before the public hearing first came in.
Okay. Now it's me from the mayor today.
So I have, I did have a part three, um, a draft part three, um.
Maybe we just make a motion to declare this a negative.
Yeah, that's all we.
From my edification, so the negative declaration, that's the EAF.
Yep.
We just went through it and now you're negative, okay.
You're just making it sure, so, so making the determination that there's no significant environmental impact. What? All in favor?
Who did you seconded, I didn't see the second.
Carl. You seconded, oh, yeah.
Motion to pass it.
Um, I give that the first determination that was circulated to the board and posted on the website, so it really does not exist. Unless, Jamie.
Yeah. Good, so, and also just back to you, on your minutes, do you also know the first payment before the?
Yeah, I, I, I'm.
Okay. So. Again, I'm always trying to get, which is no different than if I'm a member, except that I'm talking more, I mean, just so you're, and if I'm, if I'm pushing you guys too fast, then tell me, okay, cool. All right, so Maggie, what you're saying is that normally, the way that you process it is you have your draft decision?
Yeah.
Ready?
Yeah.
So.
And it's usually circulated to the board and then, um, the day before the meeting to comply with open meetings, which is because it's gonna be considered, I posted on the town club site, and that way, the board doesn't have to read through the whole resolution, hopefully they read it and they can just note any changes they got and they can move right to meetings.
Okay. So the one thing I will say is that the one resolution that Maggie had, that I looked at before, I think I cut out three quarters of it. So I'm not at all saying that I would propose doing that right now on the decision, but I'm hoping to, to, I'm hoping with the board's support that will sort of narrow things down as to my.
If we read it now and it was fine, could we prove it now?
Yeah.
Because let's read it now.
Yeah, no, no, I don't even think you have to read it, I mean, if you, if you've seen it and you know, I mean.
Please read it after you read it.
Unless it's not posted on the website and you couldn't say.
Right, okay, so basically, I would just, I would say, you know. You know, we're gonna adopt the resolution, the resolution lays out, you know, all of the submissions, uh, the board has determined that the negative declaration under secret and, um, unless there's any.
So, and here's the requirements for a specialty permit for an accessory apartment, they go, we put a note in it to show that they were met. And then, uh, oh, these are, this is, actually, so this is.
So what, what? Okay, cool, and probably what we're gonna get to, Maggie, is, is that it's gonna stay with the board, once we, once we get it real clear, structure. We'll take care of it.
Yes, I'm just trying to let you know.
No, no, I appreciate it, no, no, I do, so. So. If there are no objections, right, what I would, I would ask who wants to.
Can, can we just go to that section?
It is, we are actions by resolution, so these are the conditions and any requirements that might need to be on, say, the final. So, there they are.
And the only, the only other thing that I would do at this point, just because it's new, is I would also, before we vote, ask Paul whether he has any other suggestions or comments that, that he wants to see.
I'm gonna get that.
Go, we're waiting. No, there was a previous session where they said that everything had been met. No, there was a previous session where they said that everything had been net. That's, we see that section.
Oh.
Cause that was, that's, that's got all, that's this stuff, yeah.
Okay.
Just so.
I misunderstood you then.
Right, all the criteria.
And so let's just look at, look at this briefly. Slow down. Okay. That was. Okay. Okay. Now Paul's ready.
Well, can I ask you a question here?
Of course.
I mean, I know that they're not, so the, the construction plans are all done. Am I assuming?
Yes. I would ju, I mean. We're just adopting this as it is, but, but under normal circumstances. In, in something like this, do you literally limit to, it, it to the, the five hundred and ninety-three square feet? Because what happens if? You know.
You can't see.
Six fifty.
Correct, so, so that's, right, so that's why I would normally revise, I mean, like. Next go around, I would revise it and say. You know, an accessory dwelling unit or an accessory apartment of under six hundred and fifty square feet. So that way, if for some reason during construction, you end up with a slight shift.
It's not, they called us the inspections. So if they, if he walks in there and says, wait a minute, this, this wall. What, uh, this wall is no longer here. And it's gonna open up more square footage, Paul's gonna recognize.
No, that's a very good point.
But what I'm saying is this limits it to.
What, what I would do in a case like that? And I agree with you that the language should be a little bit more broad spectrum, but there is limitation on the size. If they increase it twenty square feet, it substantively is saying it's not enough to. Uh, it doesn't hit threshold where it kicked you back to the.
Okay, that's what I.
However, if they increase the side where it exceeds accessory apartment, then it becomes a. Z B A.
And then.
Yeah, and then, well, depending on what the proposal is, how much it is evaluated against the zoning at that point.
But I agree, but if the wording were changed for future projects. I, you know, it's five hundred ninety-three, which is what, which is below the maximum allowable six hundred and fifty. Which gives us a little wiggle room, should they. Right, tweak something and it's, you know.
It's allowed, it makes it easier for me to enforce.
Yes, so, yes.
The past, they've amended the decision and then approve it as amended.
I think it's fine as is.
So if you wanna do that, you can still do that in the final version of said.
Okay, so then I would. I guess, ask the board, do you have a, a problem then? Saying that the, the, the proposed building will be less than six, the six hundred and fifty seven.
No, I think it's a good idea.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
When we vote on it, we'll say as.
Oh, so that's it, okay.
Yeah. So there were things on Bonnie's memo dated on the twenty-third, but. Jacober did that. So we'll need to make sure that the final plan that comes in to be signed, that they're all on there. Right now, it's a draft plan.
We did that today. So, yes.
And I reflected the. You know, that the Z B A said it would be, oh, by the way, did the board see, I did get from Josh. Um, a copy of Paul's letter in the draft minutes that, um, sent me there, so.
Item C there?
Yeah.
Uh, and Paul, maybe you could address this because I, I, I don't know the, the law, but. Uh, the site plant's getting the accessory apartments of the main owner occupied. That.
No.
That's not right.
No, that's not right. Either the primary residence or the, right?
The primary residence needs to be.
Well, they can live in either one.
Yes.
Right, but the, the accessory apartment could be occupied by, either rented out, you can have your monthly loan.
Yes.
You could, you could, uh, short term rental it.
No, that's different, that's a different.
So that.
No, well, after.
Yeah, they would have to apply.
Right.
I don't.
Correct.
Based on the submission, I would say get your name.
I would just, I would just recommend that that C be dropped from this approval. Because the law is, the law.
I don't think, yeah, we're cooking it right up home, because that is not what. The town law says, it says as required by Town and Early zoning law. That's incorrect.
I, listen. Dennis, I have to go back to read specifically, I'd be shooting from the hip.
All, all I'm saying is. I'd strike that provision.
On a rocket pipe?
No, that the accessory apartment has to be on a rocket. I would just strike that whole C because there's no reason to put any notation on them. That's a, that's an incorrect notation.
I, I, I agree, I don't, I don't even know what that's in there. Basically, you should just say it must conform with the standard.
Correct.
Correct.
One hundred percent.
Okay, slow, hold, hold up. Okay.
Yep.
So it's gonna strike C then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, do we have their file about any of these that they?
He.
Or what's on page nine?
Oh, I just didn't get there yet, I was just waiting for.
Oh, okay, okay.
Uh, he brought in a, a check based on his summary, which includes all invoices to date he brought in the check in. Okay.
So I would like, I would, that's why I was asking, where do you pull up the escrow files?
Can we finish this before we move on to escrow?
Yeah, that's fine.
One more page.
Okay. But I just wanna, I would like you guys to see the escrow.
Okay, so, okay, this is just the, okay.
So we're removing that note C. And, and altering it to the apartment shall be less than six hundred and fifty square feet.
Right.
I wanted to be, the escrow before the approval.
Yeah.
All right, very good. I don't know where.
Should we, should we just vote on this now that we did that? Not apply. Well, it's subject, it's subject to escrow being paid.
Right, but part of this is that you guys should, right now, I mean, like, I, I know I'm, I'm sort of.
All right, I'm just.
I'm, I'm throwing in just, I, it would be, I mean, the N has cut the check, but I think it's important that we all just take a thirty second. And or.
Twenty seconds, that's fine. My process would be, we, we all did this. We all, we can just vote on it and approve it. You know, we might talk about. The escrow before you then, and then come back to them. So, because one is not, you know.
One side.
It's not a contingent, if the escrow isn't up to date, we're still gonna approve it, so. That's just. My suggestion for how we should do that.
I'm disagreeing, that's a solid, I think, I just because we haven't done it, I just wanted.
If the escrow isn't paid, I'm just stating that.
That he doesn't get. But he did pay the escrow, but I just. But I just. I just wanna.
Maggie's looking for that, why don't we vote? To pass this, right? Contingent on the, of course, it always is. Unless, unless Tracy would.
No, there are no new escrow because we froze the, so, so everything that's in the file, I just wanted you to have an understanding of what. But that's fine, so.
So I've only the motion.
I was gonna say.
That we adopt the modified resolution. Right, to the six hundred and fifty square feet and below. As well as the normal of. First, that's C.
Yeah, that's modified.
It's three and a half seconds.
Okay. All in favor? Bye.
If you feel, if you want to prove it.
I can be happy after we get to the. That, that.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I've, my.
Yes, I was. Don't worry.
No.
Oh, oh. But you guys got your approval, if you, if you follow that. You're welcome to say if you want, because the next, the one other piece that I just am asking the board to look at now before you do take off is, is your escrow. For you, so that the board, as opposed to Alex and. Maggie, I didn't cut the check. All right. Do you, while, while you're, while you're ready, do you mind if we jump in and just? So I'll just sort of run through this. Okay, so they started with a five hundred dollar down payment for escrow payment. They had. In. November, they had an eighty dollar expenditure with Grant and Lyons, three hundred and forty-eight seventy-five expenditure. In September from Nelson Pope. Grant Lyons, again in September, sorry, these are not in date order, September was four hundred and thirty dollars. Nelson Pope was. Two hundred and seventy. And Grant Lyons was an additional three hundred and twenty. So they had a total expenditure of what appears to be fourteen. Fourteen hundred and forty-eight dollars for this application.
How much?
Fourteen forty-eight. Seventy-five. Um, so we, what? So as of.
His check might not be on there. He just, he just gave it to him, so it's part of whatever that balance is.
Right, so what as of, as we're trying to get at, is as of. September. With the first bill, basically. But even a negative. So we were, if, if the, the file was running out of debt, a deficit since September. But so it'd be like. Okay.
That's the note in voice.
But.
The balance is paid, it's payable, but I'm just letting you, so, so each month. And, and I did check before, before the meeting, there were no new invoices that were received. As of, so I think we're gonna roll through all of the old files. But every, at every meeting, we're gonna go through, for any application, we're gonna go through the, the escrow. If there's any, you know. Open fees.
Do you have both? Cause they, they did two, they're two checks.
Right, you have five hundred dollar check and then you paid a nine hundred, it looks like nine forty-eight or.
Twelve, twelve, twelve hundred. It's just that. No, that was the filing fee.
Oh, okay.
Right, so there's a filing fee and the escrow and the public hearing.
All right, I understand.
So there's three, right, but there's the filing fee, the public hearing fee and the.
Okay, so what I would, what I would, if the board is supportive of this, I would like to also see. On this summary sheet, we should have their total submission, you know, what they've paid for their application, what they've paid for their. And I don't know that we're gonna charge it. We'll talk about it. Later, online after the. You know, and their escrow, and then we'll just do a, a tally and we're gonna, you know. At every meeting, we're gonna have all of our files with our summary.
And you'll have them on the drive to video?
There, there is a, yeah, it's a separate.
Okay.
The answer is yes. I saw the extra.
Right, so any, any overage that you have paid will be returned. So, my understanding. My, well. There should be no additional bills on this file from November, September, November, okay, so they, so I don't know whether you, if you. You collect, you collected over the eight nine hundred and forty-eight dollars?
In case.
So that's all I'm trying to figure out will be returned, so. So what I would as part of this and why I was trying to get to this, Dennis. In the, in the approval. I think it would be great, right now, as we're doing these, if we just wrapped into the final approval, that the remaining balance of the escrow fund. Shall be, you know, shall be replaced or returned to the, so that we don't have to do a separate. Resolution, basically.
Mind just at the end of the resolution, put down the status of the escrow, that it's, it's part of, you know, and there's.
No, but I find that's, we don't know what the balance is.
In most cases, we haven't not seen them in a couple of months, in most cases. Somebody's at the meeting and likely to get a bill set. That's why it's a condition that all fees.
Correct, but right now, we're doing, we're wearing up bills, so.
They're done, they, they got their shackles in this weather.
So, you'll get a copy of the decision. And then, and when you get a call.
Perfect.
And at, at that point, probably at the end of the meeting.
That's, that's correct. Escrow balances, no, sorry.
Okay.
You can go home now. No, no, we don't need them now.
Thank you, thanks.
And then we'll, we'll do a resolution. Authorized. So Maggie, Maggie said that. It provided a related, that applicant, the other applicant that would be after you is like, literally just getting.
I'm not gonna complain, no, she has been an education, I think that. I don't, I don't envy you. It's, uh, yeah, that's something I would want to do.
Okay.
He's a cop, so.
That, that in itself is, is not a clean cop, because we don't wanna know that he's gonna know what's.
If I, if I go over, we have a big problem.
So.
Then I'll get out of the office.
Mr. Shaffer, can you, can you give us a very quick?
Sure. Do I wait for, for that, or you want me to? So, so, uh, basically, I'm a local area resident in Lebon, uh, I'm standing at the corner of two hotels row. Uh, I am looking to put an accessory building on a piece of property that I do not own yet, I have a binder.
Okay.
Um. Town law says I can't put an accessory building on a piece of property that does not have a primary book. My wife will not let me put an accessory building on our property. So I am looking at a, a piece of property that is. About two hundred, three hundred yards down the road from me, so it doesn't adjoin me, it doesn't adjoin me. Um, so I am looking to put a, a pole barn on that piece of property. That I can use for storage of my stuff, for my business and for my, uh, personal stuff. I, I don't, I don't do that business out there.
That's a business?
So I supply especially rated motorcycles around the world. So if you ever watch the New York City Marathon. What you see on TV comes from us. So, um, I, I don't do business in this area, I don't have the funds in this area, this is nearly for storage. My stuff and my equipment that I have.
Not an idea, because first you were talking about an accessory fund, but you're not.
No, no, accessory building.
Oh, accessory building, okay.
Accessory building. And I learned, I learned this, as I said, it's been a learning experience, so.
The next question, was he, are you done? Oh, I guess my question is, does the law says it has to be. A primary residence, not supposed to be accessory, that they don't, it's a residential district. So on what basis are we to, I mean.
Is this a lawful, basically? Especially.
With special use permit?
Is that the way we apply for?
Exactly, that's, yeah.
He's using it accessory to his residence, he does, just gotta be correct here if I'm wrong.
No, it's like.
He does conduct his business out of his house. But the vehicles, for example, that would have company logo on it would be parked in here, but it's an accessory to the primary residence to use, which is not on the same lot. The use table says, if it's accessory, not on the primary lot, requires special use permit.
That's the refer.
So, so if the use changes in the future, not that you would, you have to re-then the, the special use permit is not valid based upon the use of the structure?
If, yes, if it conditions that people proved it out there, if you approved it for this specific, if, if they changed. I'd have to see what the change is and then we make a zoning determination, but the likelihood is. It would require another special use permit.
So, so if you decide.
So Paul, so I understand, I guess, the zoning laws, so it can be an accessory building, but you have to be a kind of early property owner and have another, you can't just come in, buy a, buy a. A, a lot and put an accessory building on it.
No, I mean, I'm gonna say no.
I would say.
Right.
Zoning is not that specific, but the likelihood is if I got that application in, somebody lived in, let's say, Newport's. I would deny the application.
Right, cause they just wanted to put a building that is not allowed. Okay, because it would be then like a commercial building.
Yes, the, the zoning is there to protect the early residence.
This zoning, you can have an accessory building. And on and on, you do this lot.
Yes, this lot is good for shit, I have to walk in the doors, but it's not really conducive to building a residence on.
Okay.
So, so what, I mean, I. Okay. I would disagree potentially with Paul. What, what I would say is the difference here is if, if he, his house was on that lot. Then he could build the structure. As a lot, but because his house isn't on that lot.
Right, no, I, I, I understand, it's, it was just the accessory and, you know, it's almost a lot and everything, and apparently it's allowed, so that's fine, I understand.
So it, it, it isn't allowed, but it is allowed if it's a special use permit. And if the CEO says we need to get special use permit. Then there's also, I think, in, in the code, a special use permit is a one-year permit, am I, am I right, or is it?
No, once a year, one.
No, it's basically.
The layup unless you, if you, if, 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 if the, if the operation ceases. Then the special use will sunset, but, and the reason that I'm disagreeing with you, Paul, is that. It's a co, you can't, it's a constitutional violation, if you say I will not allow someone to do something because they don't live here.
Well, I qualify that with the likely, but I, I don't imply or state verbal approval until I have a.
But that would be a back, back call.
I'd have to see it, it would be irresponsible of me to say yes, in that hypothetical, not knowing exactly what it is, say your name, so I may have misspoken myself.
But, and so the special use permit basically says it's a use that can be allowed with conditions, and then the question is, what are your conditions, and, and, so that's.
That's where, that's where you have the zone implicit condition.
Right, and he thought you were gonna do very fast, but, but so, so.
Is this an open pole barn type thing?
No, no, it'll have doors on it. And it's public, right, yes.
Right, so what are we doing tonight, what are we supposed to do tonight, cause I thought you were just, you're just telling us about it, or do you come back?
My, my understanding is I was, I mean, answering the questions you had, and then I was going to a public hearing next month and. It's gone, I just thought it was easy, I'm not putting a, a set of kit in or anything else, I'm just, I just need storage.
Maybe I. It's released. It has to be renewed again every year, so, that may or may not change, so. Play. Yeah, well, I, I. You know, I find this, cause I'm. Paul's the first, that's my job. Right.
So, we're talking about a piece of property that he does not own yet, you want to do that?
I, yeah, yes, it's just the, the owner of the property authorizes the application.
I, I, so I have a binder on the property with the intention of buying it as long as I can do that, and as you're raising, you raised an interesting question that I didn't hear before about the special use permit having to be renewed every year. If that's the case, then that puts me at jeopardy of being rescinded.
It might be a key paper, if you're asking.
Paul, whose firm, Paul? Um, so. Cause I, of course, am not used to it being a one-year renovation, so do they come back to you, and as long as there's been no violations or complaints, it's just an automatic renewal?
Well, the, that's a very good question, and again, uh, you know, it's short of research, it, I don't know the bottom line historically. Let me just make.
Okay.
Yeah. Expand on that, so, not too long ago. We had a, an applicant who. They had the special use permit and they did not do what they were going to do. They just, time lapsed, they didn't have the monies, whatever, so the special use permit that the planning board granted expired. The code says you have to get back in front of the building apartment before it expires. So that way. There, it's, it's set up to get you the attention.
I'd have to agree, but that's a building. There's a time limitation outside plan review, you have one year to obtain the building, you have two years to obtain the CEO.
Okay, so.
That's not the case with special use permit, historically.
If it's not exercise within one year, the beneficial ones is therefore declared to be revoked.
So actually, that's, it's not that you don't get approval, then sit on it for years.
Historically, specially.
Right, that's not.
No, no.
I said the first time, I was, I had to come back.
Historically, special use terms are not inspected yearly. Um, I don't have the manpower, it was never, a lot of this was issued, quite frankly, on small-scale residential, it's a basic.
Paul, mentioned Debbie, just read, I mean, it just.
Was that special use or cycle interview?
But, no, this is just for the, when you got the global for the permit, you have to be in action every year, like the G E P, you got a set of.
No, there's a time stack, again, I don't have in front of me, and I, I read thousands of pages a week. I believe that cycle and review, special use permit, the, the time stipulation is not in the stress toward my.
Yes, right, so that's what I'm saying.
Well, I believe what it is, is that there needs to be substantial progress.
The building permit needs to have been applied for.
Well, the, the fact that he has to be building his barn and making progress, it might take three years, but.
What are you, right?
It says procedures number four, any special permit use, which is not exercise, whatever that means, with one year in the day, the visual ones is everybody declared to be revoked without further hearing, so just get your permit within a year.
That's, yeah.
I was ready to start today.
All right, so we need to make a quick, so we need to, we need to just schedule the, the public hearing?
Right, well, hold on a second. Can we do a public hearing, he doesn't own the property?
Yeah.
So, we can?
Because he's, he's been authorized as the representative of the property owner, and this is a stand, so that's a standard in all, in, frequently in real estate transactions, because people don't buy.
Okay, got it, okay.
Okay, so is the application. A board member has not reviewed this application, so is the application as submitted complete, does he have, did you submit the application, okay, and we.
Is the application, we asked the form or anything to warm it up?
Everything, everything, I had the county highway there, they looked at it, said, yep, there's a right, driveway, just let them know we're ready.
Okay.
There is existing access here, yeah.
And Maggie, when did he, when did he wrap all those up?
It's on the agenda.
No, I see it, it's only.
As soon as you get it, she's gonna buy it, right? What's that?
As soon as you get this, you're gonna buy it.
Well, that's the thing, yeah, there, there's no reason to buy the property if I can't put anything on it.
Okay, so.
That's the sole reason, and it's literally just the street from my house, so it works out perfectly.
For your license?
Yes.
That'd be why, that'd be why.
I read that once.
So, so I would just ask, so similar to the application that was coming up next, Debbie and I sat and did a. A pre-application review with them, is there a board member who would be interested in, in taking a look at the file so that they can understand and, and short-circuit any questions?
Just, this one, so that next, next meeting, we're up to speed on.
Yeah.
Didn't that go out via mail?
So, yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna try and, we're, we're working through a new process, I believe, and I believe John will tell you that it was very beneficial.
Okay.
Uh, and it may not be that we need to have them come in, but if you're local and you're available.
So let's start getting busy.
Okay, perfect, so.
Are you expected to get approval tonight?
No, I, no, my understanding, just in talking to Maggie, was I was here to answer any questions, and then the public hearing was gonna be next month, and I could start right after that, that was my understanding.
Okay, so af, right, after the approval was granted, can we ask you again, pay any bills if there are any open invoices? And then you get the. But, so is there anybody here who would like to sit down and look at this application with me? I guess I can.
I could do that, but also, I think, we can't schedule a public hearing for next month, can we? We haven't, we haven't, like, looked at this file and addressed any potential issues.
We can, if you find something, then we would have to ask, that's the reason for us sitting down with him next week, so if we see something that he doesn't have in, in the paperwork, he can have it and, and prepare it for the public hearing. So, that's the sort of.
Okay.
But we can schedule.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can, yeah, because I, I think it would be beneficial for our residents, for, and for us, for sanity, to expedite this process.
Yes. So, sure, perfect, so, so, um, if you are, Dennis, I don't know whether, so, but we can, if you're doing on Fridays, Paul and I were talking about like Fri- Friday mornings.
Oh, make that like a standing.
Right, so whatever the application is.
Yeah, I could, I could probably do that, especially if I know ahead of time.
Right, so, okay.
So, not tomorrow.
Yeah.
Not this Friday, the following, but yes, kind of default.
Which is, I think is that the thirty?
Friday before sleeping. No.
I'll be in.
Yeah, we, yeah.
That would be the thirty.
Right, the thirty-first, so if you are available on the thirty-first.
But, yeah, there's a.
Paul, put that on our agenda, we want it on the thirty-first.
Yeah, if he gives email address, I'll have, um. Can send out calendar advice.
Sounds like a why.
Just tell me who, who to have her send it to.
Okay.
Did you have a time clip? Uh, it would be February twenty-second.
Well, yeah.
No, 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 no.
I'm getting on Friday.
Well, what works to you, nine AM?
That's fine.
Dennis, is that too early?
Yeah, that's fine.
Paul, nine AM?
Nice, perfect.
Okay.
Here, right?
Yeah, just here. I was fifteen minutes late before, I thought I'd be here at four o'clock. So, I would, if I, yeah, so I would say that this would be, if I want.
You're saying nine or ten, that, that's nine o'clock?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I don't know why it's like, you're right, that was me, that was me going, sorry. So type two, type two short form.
There for the.
Okay, I got that.
Okay.
Let me start in my log.
I was.
And I think the, I think the basket was on that.
In, yeah, so.
Less than one minute.
Yeah.
In the history of, um, between these special use permits. Uh, we don't usually classify. The secret determination, so that, you know, it's completely what?
No, no, giving you identify what it is, if you, if you see, you don't do it till after the public hearing, but if it's type two.
So we're just, we're just saying that it's a type-two action, that's all, we're not, we're not, we're not making a determination at all.
Self.
Character application, you did?
I did.
It was, it's, 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 it's nice, I mean, it's thorough, it's complete, and it's, and you're not a professional, I mean, a professional. This is our application.
Hey, all of.
But also his attempt.
Mr. Schaffler's files are on the drive?
On the drive, I'll send you a new thing, just send you.
Okay.
It's a very clear application, it's our new.
Here's your schedule.
So, Dennis, why don't you make the motion to schedule a public hearing for? Okay, Dennis.
I'll second Dennis.
That's for next month?
All right.
At, at five forty. Since we start at five thirty.
Okay.
We save the time for their rest of the agenda.
Okay, so let me, let me say to the board, I would not recommend that.
I recommend what?
Five forty. And the reason I would not recommend five forty is, let's take, like, some things before, because at least, if you do it at five forty. I mean, do you think neighbors can get here, I mean, not that I'm expecting anybody would come for a public hearing, we should.
I think you could potentially have a fifteen-minute public comment period that doesn't pertain to this. So, that's gonna be fifteen minutes after.
You guys get fifteen minutes to have a public comment?
All right, you have the first of five, you did.
Yeah, so, and, so five forty-five would be the earliest.
Okay, we can.
Money is always gonna start at five thirty.
Well, then I assume that Mr. Schaffler's, um, application would be the first thing on the agenda.
Right, okay, five, sorry, five? Yeah, it's five forty-five?
Sure.
So we never just get an actual motion vote?
Yes. All in favor? All right, we'll do a motion now, I thought we'd have a motion, but classified as a take-two action, for, take a motion to classify this as a take-two action. All in favor?
All right.
Okay. We'll see you Friday, the thirty-first. At nine AM.
Thank you.
Bye.
That was you, appreciate it, thank you.
Have I got my name, my, this is my, these are my.
I, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you got it.
He's getting resulted. No, Richon loves to barf his back and forth.
Okay, all right, so.
Can we, uh, so, I'm gonna see, person for that, can we come up with a term, should we call it?
Yes, yes.
Advocate?
So ba- basically, what you're, you're the planning board rep for that file.
Okay.
Is what, I, I mean, that's how I, but if you.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, what, how should we title that, rep, advocate?
Agent.
It doesn't, you know.
Agent.
Or authorized agent is the industry term.
Or planning board, you're a planning board?
No, I think it's.
No, 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 for being, being the lead, taking the lead on that file.
Or you're the planning board liaison, that's that.
Liaison, that's, that's.
I totally misunderstood.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's what I was getting at, I, I just an advocate.
Yeah.
Liaison.
Right.
French. Liaison.
Okay, so for this application, Debbie, for the one that's about to come up on the screen, Debbie is the liaison.
I'm very nervous.
It's time to be nervous.
Yes, Maggie, there may be, Maggie, that you add this to the file? When we have a liaison?
Oh, yeah.
Who is, so that anybody, if they have questions, they can contact the liaison.
And it'll also be in the minutes.
Yeah.
And on the agenda.
Okay.
And if you want, we can meet at eight forty-five and do a site visit. Okay.
You want the plaque, you want?
I want the, um, the plaque, that shows the, the proposed plans, yeah, I guess subdivision, not that they're born, I like the ones.
Oh, and I like the first of the inter. Yeah. Dennis, I think it will let Tris see, she can enter that, where's your pointer?
So they only usually have the African, this is the first time, right?
Well, they, they actually already.
Oh, and they have a liaison.
We have a liaison, so, so we're, we're basically gonna be able to short-circuit.
Yes, okay.
Okay, and then zoom it out, yeah.
There we go.
Go down a little bit more as you get full plot, this is the whole, there it goes. No, no, okay. So this is the property, up right here, this might be confusing, this is not part of the car- parcel, this is the prop. There's your water bottle. This is the property that.
Isn't questioned.
That John owns, John and Tom, and this is a street, a public street that does puncture the property, this is a, one of the things we had a question that, we'll get back to that. But there are, there are five different parcels, and it's a five. Building subdivision, this first parcel has its own driveway off the public road. This parcel, this is the driveway, not a public road, a driveway that leads to, up to here, and that becomes a driveway, so we have one, two, three, four, five. And John's gonna live in this one. And John's gonna live in this one. Um, okay, um, this is gonna be either, I don't know if it determines stick built or.
They're all gonna be stick built.
Stick built, and they're gonna be highish end buildings. I think right now they're all three bedroomed up buildings, I should get. Yeah, I think it should be, um, yes, it should be.
Four, four road.
You suggested four.
Andrew, when you're getting a lot more money for it, sorry, that's off the record, um.
What's the sound of each lot?
Each lot. Oh, you can go back, I can read now. Four, five, four, five, I'm done with this, I'm just doing. This is. Here we have this, first parcel is four point two one acres, this one is, where are you?
Uh, four point two seven.
Oh, on the other side of the road.
Okay, got it, okay, yes, so Maggie, can you give me the whole square, like, give me this portion also? I think I wanna be in charge of the mouse, um. This portion of the land, which is beyond the shared driveway, is part of the property that's over here, like this is an easement across his property, that's an easement across his, and this little piece is an easement off of his, and this is a driveway, this is also an easement.
Okay.
So, um, and this piece of property right here, you don't really have a decline used for, right?
No, they do end up meeting the criteria of square footages, um, minimum. They signed it to lot two, but it's on the other side of the road.
Okay, so lot two is all of this. Is that weird having a lot that is across the street from where you live?
Yeah, it's how.
Oh, okay. Okay. This is one of the concerns, or the talk, is that this is a very heavily steep and wooded site. So, um, and we were discussing at the pre-meeting, where would the escarpment be, but we don't believe there is the escarpment, because it's all just densely treed and there's no cliff edge, but we were discussing the importance of the visual assessment, not just the materials, but in the removal of trees, and they discussed minimizing the trees only to the, yeah, only to what they have to do, they wanna keep it wooded. So as far as visual assessment, I don't think there'll be any like setback kind of things from encroachments, but there'll be all the other stuff, the lighting, um, textures and everything else.
So the first lot doesn't need a maintenance.
No, first lot's standing on driveway off of the road. The other part is, the driveway for that, um, has been submitted, I'm not sure if it's approved yet, but the other driveway that she's showing you right now has already been approved. The common drive is a cop, as far as.
Talking about.
Yeah, yeah, just so you.
We have an existing current cup for the, oh, common. Common driveway, so you have a bit of the road, that'll be a private road.
Private road, correct.
Not a town or village, really.
So, um, so they'll have, right, so, talk about what we asked them to upgrade in this.
I don't remember.
Okay, pull offs?
You wanted to know about, um, types of houses we were gonna be doing possibly?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then also lighting and.
Yeah.
We have some, um.
Yeah, he brought some samples.
What?
You can show them, I don't have to.
You just want the rich, or is.
Well, no, I. You'll have that, we won't keep.
It's not, it's not possible, we're gonna go within.
We understand, we're gonna get to file, so one, huh, Maggie, just one whole set. And then the other, we can certify.
So, so one of the things we discussed about this, that this kind of subdivisions.
Yes.
Subdivision is probably gonna require a consultant that's an engineer to review, overlook into, you know, an site plan, I don't think it's, so that's what we kind of recommend.
Can I, these actual pictures of what the house is.
No, no, this is.
This is what we've built, we've just built this, or we've built this in term of town.
What zone is this in, what, what building is this? So you have to do the visual assessment.
Yeah.
And that's where it has to conform to the earth growth and all of that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Dennis, at the subdivision stage, you can give them visual assessment and approval, it's gonna have to be individual, like we're doing now.
Yeah, that's what it all, it's gonna be one, one complete application for the future, and so we talked to them about showing us, you know, and there to be, uh, a, a list of requirements that, that, so that they were performing, what they needed in natural home, they would have to show. Right, yeah. And then, so, and, and just, you know, possibly just taking some pictures, showing balloons, so, and, and then just a total of. Like, we never could ban off. Well, that was the, like, that they'd have to show the building.
I mean, I, I need to know.
That's, that's gonna have to be calculated.
Yeah.
And the limits of site disturbance, whatever's in there, God bless, and, fine, because he's a friend of mine, but you're gonna have to get at least ten percent. Erosion, sediment, all, storm, loo, plant, and whoever it is near, he's gonna.
That's why, that's why, you know, I.
Because the drainage, probably, it's gonna need to be.
The, the question I have is, it was effective January first of this year, that new wetlands fall into effect, so I noticed this stream. You know, the stream. One really close, I don't know how far away this is from this area right here, this property, the stream.
Great, make sure you point on the map, yeah. Yeah, because.
Did you do that? Did you do a wireless play? Um.
I don't think we did that, yeah.
I lost the stream. This is the stream around here, the stream?
On the side.
Oh, is that it, or no?
No, I think that's the line dividing.
That looks like the, the property line, that looks like, so the stream's around here. Okay, stream, we're looking at the stream, guys, the stream.
This street, this, this is what you're looking at here, it, all this is, is as far as a stream, is all your runoffs from your, it's almost like a drainage stream, uh, it runs when it rains.
It's an intermittent stream.
Right, doesn't run. And it goes into a culvert, it goes to a culvert here, and it goes under across the street, and it dumps out into this, this, that, that's, that, this is a stream, that, that, across the street is.
Actually, the winner is probably running a little.
Yeah, yeah, there's.
Spring, springtime, it'll run a little bit, as far as getting, you know, running water there all the time, I don't think it's not a.
Is, uh, all the way down there. Yeah, this is the end of the OP right at the end.
If you look past there, dead ends too.
Dead ends too, yes.
One of the things we also discussed, I mean, also the question that they show us when they make their visual assessment, which we're gonna apply to each lot with the materials, is to show us, um, a view of, like a site section, to show how the house will be actually covered by all the, the trees.
You wanna see that from Holy Mountain Road, that's what I mean.
I also.
I will not see that.
You won't see it.
You won't see it, you'll see maybe two houses of it from field paper. You might be able to see this house from field paper.
I think the only.
And this one, maybe, maybe these two.
The only one he'll see you guys.
Is this one.
Number two.
Two, okay, two is.
Piece of property.
Where's the blue white house, because they're the builders for the blue white house.
Stop.
Yeah, where's, where's Scott?
So, Scott is right here, yes, so. Not right there, Scott's like we're here. Scott's like over there.
Okay, you probably need to, like, bring this to one conversation, just so that we can keep it. No, it's okay, so, Debbie, you want it to finish, it's, it's.
I, I just want, oh, okay, I just want it to be because I, it's my settings, I'm standing, so it's backwards, so just tell me what you want. I wanna see the whole site on one picture. Okay. I, I think you have to shrink it a little bit, eh, there you go, okay. I don't think I have anything else to say.
Well, okay, so we. I have another question, because we just did the, the wetlands, and then I just wanna go further onto that, and there's a lot of ridge lines and valleys.
Yes.
So, are there any, are there holes in this area?
No.
Okay.
And, and you need to understand the property better, I've walked it so many times, that if you can swear to come. Here's our driveway that we're gonna put in, if you came up the driveway, and every lot is gonna be off the right hand side, you would, here's, here's, there'd be a house here, a house here, a house here, house, house. To the back of that is where the steepness comes, you know, there, there's a, there's a, that, that's, it's a ravine there, that, everything's gonna be above on the, on the top of that.
Really steep.
Yeah, uh, it's really steep, yeah, yeah, it's really steep, but it, it drops off and it comes back to the other side, the backside will be just portions of old property, nothing built in, building anything near the cliff or none of that type of stuff like that, that's on it.
Your submission, what your engineer will know, should include the amount of disturbance and what percentage of the site and lock it out. And then all, oh, we weren't gone?
Got it, I have a question.
And all, well, all the things that are in the subdivision section of the code.
Yeah, so they're, they're working with the near layers, so I'd like to propose, um, that we work with peak engineering if they're available.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody take with that for our surveys, or you guys. So, no. Question here, so will any of these, um, will the escarpment code be a factor in any of these?
There's no escarpment.
I don't think I was saying that was really steep.
The escarpment is when the, when the steepness stops, you have a cliff. And then, yeah, and then it goes down, so the escarpment is what makes the house invisible, like in.
Right, well, that's what I'm asking, you, is that.
But he's gonna, they're gonna do a site, a site section to show the, the slope, this is harder than a topo, you see this, the slope where the house is gonna be and the trees below it and above it.
If you, if you were to, to look at this, right, and this was, this was the, the ravine it runs through, okay, so if you're in your house over here that we built, you look across, you're gonna see the, the hill, the other side of the hill, you're not, you're not, you can't see o- over that and see anything.
Right, but that's not what.
There's no care about the people, good.
No, I see it, that's what I'm saying, that they wouldn't be able to see anything to that side.
And, and the question is, is it where you are?
I mean, you can't see anything back.
That's right.
What if it's cheap?
So what is our next?
So, I also want to talk to them about, you know, the length of the road, where the road stops and the driveway starts, that they will still have to pull it, put in pull offs for the tire trucks to turn around.
Turn around.
Turn around at the end, or it's a hammerhead or a, I don't know whether your code requires hammerhead or a soul design, so that's.
Yeah, well, basically, it's not, it's just the turnaround.
So the whole point of the preliminary is like, we look at it and gave them a, a number of comments about things that they needed to provide and gather, and then, and then Debbie sort of talked to what it is.
Yes.
So. So, you don't, so that, so I would like, let's have a more discussion about whether, you know, what we.
We now have some discussions.
So, we do need to overlook.
Yes.
So, is, is the, is the driveway rough in at all, and anything, so.
Well, it's, it's a natural cut, right.
So at what point would it be prudent for us to do the site visit?
Spring.
No, seriously, like, because like, if it's, you know, because you, you would have to do some sort of staking or anything so that we could understand what we're looking at.
You know, I, I, we should do a visual assessment, you know, go there and see it, but I, I don't really know what we see when we go in there, we're just seeing all the trees.
Well, that's what I'm talking to them about.
We see that when we're satisfied.
No, but we would need to have.
We could all walk in to do this, it is very accessible to walk in.
It's not really good.
Right, but have you staked anything out yet, or?
We, what we did do, test holes?
Test holes.
We did some test holes on, on each site. Because we, we would, we would wanna see like four corners of a foundation on each site that is great. So we would know approximately where the house is. Right, but that's what I'm saying.
We can identify that, yeah.
We did that, so.
With the walk through, make more sense, after we got the engineer drawing, that one was in here, this was done by a surveyor.
So, no, this was done by an engineer. Where is his, uh, cul-de-sac at the end of this?
We have, we, it's. Something's gonna be added to it.
Probably be.
Can you point to the one that's up on the screen?
I gotta write.
John, 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 please point to the one that's on the screen, so I can.
It's gonna be right here.
Yeah, right here.
Yes, sir.
That's approximately twelve hundred feet right there.
Right, correct.
Looking at your map, yes.
So that's why we talked about squashes. And from that point.
From this point on here, this will be a driveway of, of this, this person's driveway here, this would be that.
You might, you might do a, a, a team on the three driveways that are proposed for those where they're coming in, walk for a team, the other side of them.
Did, did you point where it goes?
Yeah, like the door, like here, like right there.
Oh, you can come directly back off of this.
Yeah.
The other side, then you have to stay back out.
You already have the partial, right, partial, right, yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, I always see plans where, where you do it actually inside the driveway, so that.
Here. This part, this part here, so they can come in and back out and drive up to you.
Right, so that the person's driveway it is, it becomes like part of their, like, in their main.
Yeah, this would be, would be the turnaround, then you'd have one here on this corner, one in this corner here, and then whatever.
Yeah, that's three.
Oh, yeah, and, and.
Besides the cul-de-sac.
Right, you cul-de-sac the end here, then one here, one here, you have to do one.
That's right.
There, there's a distance, I imagine, apart, right, five, is it, uh? Look it up in the code.
I'm sure the three that you got, you're gonna put in there.
Are sufficient.
You know, the three application, guess I'm just focusing a little bit more.
Anybody have any other suggestions or questions or wanna cook? And if those are suggestions or questions.
What's on the, what is on the next step?
I hope he's got it.
Um, I don't know whether or not you, you have the capability.
Oh, what?
To do it, you don't have to do it, but we've already had someone come with a drone to do a video footage of the area. I don't know.
We just, we just did it for a planning board.
You know.
Overhead.
Yeah, of, of where, of where the locations of the houses.
First, I don't know that, I don't know that that's, that's helpful. Really wanna see is like, what can you see from the house, or can somebody see the house from across the way, so, you know, I don't know how.
Drone would be, it's not as completed yet, so it's gonna be. It's a dense forest, it's a lot.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a dense forest.
There's a lot of pine trees in there, I'm not sure what you could see now, at, at the way.
I'd have liked to do the walk through before the trees leaped out, so, I obviously you would too, and when the ground gets a little bit less snowy, but, um, so, so, we can do it soon.
Well, that's what I was asking them, and they.
After July, after Valentine's Day, because I'm gonna do it.
So we did it at our door.
Okay, good. Um, just so the board knows that this is the first test of the new subdivision application, so they've already filled out their waivers, they, so. We tried to, I tried to make it a little more complete from the beginning.
All right.
So, when you look at it, be critical.
So the next time we come, what, what, what are we doing here, especially where we're gonna?
I'm gonna answer the questions about the, um, road, square footages of disturbance. Uh, what we're doing with. She has a whole list for me, she does, that you have, we've discussed, you were sending your email from your list.
My list that I wanted to get to.
Chair, I have the engineer changed.
Bordercut visual, swift, road profiles.
Um, you'd tell us visual lighting. Escrow.
So, so my recommendation at this point is that we set a five thousand dollar escrow, initial escrow, and a replenishment at twenty five hundred. Um, and if the board agrees, we would.
Only a motion.
Okay, and then, and then that we, um, the board approves that we work with peak, because they've got for near layers, and then we can talk about whether or not we are, in addition to an engineering.
And you do a monthly report on what it's spent.
Correct.
What we've spent.
So, so we will set this, so afterwards, we would, right now, or after our discussion, we would basically pass a resolution that it sets their initial escrow fee at five thousand dollars, with a replenishment twenty, twenty five hundred. Replenishment forty of twenty five hundred. Okay, so um. And right, peak engineering. So but one of the things that Maggie did, and I don't think is. Um, I would change is that when they hit twenty five hundred, they would give us another twenty five hundred. I don't think somewhere, I guess you guys had a. A process of if they hit twenty five hundred, you ask them for another five, so then you wouldn't be sitting on seventy five hundred. I I don't see that that's necessary. I mean, I guess Maggie says that you cut down that in the past, but I would just recommend that you. Hit your twenty five and replenish it.
So just keep, I'll just make sure it's at five.
So I would make a suggestion that um. We probably schedule the site visit at next meeting. So if you guys could. The foundation, the footprints of each of the buildings. You know, at the, you know, by next meeting or shortly thereafter, because you would have to do that site visit. Within a week or two of the next meeting.
Number five is gonna challenge.
We could discuss what we've seen. At the March meeting. Completed that part of it, so I'm just giving you the heads up.
Yeah, we can get rectangles out there. Take off that you can come in and then we see where that house is gonna say.
Right, and between now and then, the the engineers can be communicating with each other. So that that's really what they're working on.
Our engineer is is fine, and then you guys want.
No, sorry, I but it doesn't matter, but the fact you're meeting Brinear Larios as your surveyor, you don't want. Them reviewing. Okay, call the call the vote.
Okay, so it's minus what maybe from the beginning, which I don't have. So, okay, I didn't wanna say it without remembering exactly.
Are you doing underground utilities?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, big town.
Do you want for next meeting, um, because I'm sure send me. As far as change wise on the map, you want that to be changed at that point in time. Like you said, don't go change it. Like you wanna see the turnarounds on the map, wanna see all that thing.
So I would say. That you don't need to do that yet. So let's say we if we do a site visit, there's no reason for you to. Go back through drawing something. And also the engineers.
You push here. Is there any way we can do the site visit before the next meeting?
Yeah.
Well, that that we could.
If we had the weather cooperies. Right, you know, that's what I'm saying, because I still have to get up there and mark it out. I understand that.
I hope the snow melts before more.
Do you wanna schedule the site visit for the?
When is our February meeting? Let's see if we can schedule, let's make a tentative beforehand and if the weather is.
Yeah, so how do you guys normally do this? Do you all go out in one group?
That would be that would be good. I mean.
Well, in this kind of case, we have to have a meeting point because it's not. Yeah, so we can arrange to meet like at a certain spot, so we can all just be together when.
Like I said, the road is 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 a dead end road here, and we can all park along the river there.
And you want the week before or? Leave in the seventeenth is the full week before your meeting. I like the week of the seventeenth. Is that too late? So I wanna be able to walk it and. Christmas Day is seventeen.
President's Day is seventeen.
A time.
Ten. Didn't you say ten?
You know, since we're wasting the day.
Maggie, would you uh or someone be um sending us a a mail with? Meet point. And, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we could be in meet point. We should just.
Meet point would be right at the.
Well, or did I make a suggestion?
Do I do that?
No.
So I'll put options, either meet at the site or carpool, carpool. Hopefully we can organize it ourselves. Um, so can I?
As far as marking it out, we've scheduled a little bit of a. Yeah. I'm sorry.
Do you need to, have you walked that little?
Thank you. With respect, we decline. I'm not walking that site for winter, no, pretty much. No chance. My balance is terrible.
I I wanted to put it out there.
I think you should walk it. It needs to be, and you need to see it, it sits too. Um, particularly you get abbreviated into five of these, but I I can't walk, so I don't refer that.
So can I ask them, other than the escrow? What? Are they expected to bring to me by the deadline for the February meeting, which is? Is February fifth.
Well, we just told them they don't want it. They we don't want any changes on the.
That's why I'm asking you.
I mean, they're supposed to work on the site and their engineer would talk to the town engineer.
Are we gonna have a planner here at next meeting?
No, no, we'll talk about that.
Well, well, so I would need to engage to peak engineering, go with the file.
No.
No?
There's nothing to look at really, right? You know, because we have to pick down, I know that I'm living there, so I know what I'm building, but we didn't go on to all of our houses.
Right, okay.
So.
That's good.
Which they already have. Not until we have more information, would we complete our site.
Between now and the next meeting or the meeting deadline, if you discover anything about the site that is dramatic, that will make a change, that's not. You know, just people are surprised at what you're finding as an element. Well, it's like, if I make it lot number two, you'll be lucky.
I I'm gonna take you right up the old, there's an old logging road we can follow. It's not gonna be, you know. That's actually a pretty good idea.
There's, yeah, there's one accident in one spot that is making.
Yeah, well, you know, that's that's, I was just kidding. Before, I was pushing for March, but.
I I will not be there.
So is it a big weather permit?
This is New York.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whose property was this?
Uh, that belonged to um. Gentleman from New York City. They actually had come to us to build a house there. And we were working on the building house.
Really?
People, that's where we went. So she, yes, you tell the stories, you know, as you think of it, you say, oh, it's not like their house down, but they were. The waterfall. Is actually cannibalism. Yeah, and it's just, yeah, and she said a hundred years ago. And they spent some. Yes, no, no, no. The owl, that's our owl. So um. If anything major comes up, just send us a little whatever email and.
Alright, so there was a there was a in an escrow or an application. An application B, there was a duplicate payment bay, the consultant paid after the applicant actually paid. So this is a resolution authorizing the return of over payment. So whereas.
It was Derwin Reese.
Whereas Derwin Reese submitted an application for a lot line adjustment of SBL fifty five point intersection three. Section three, block two, located six forty seventh Hurley Avenue, and associated with check number two sixty five. And whereas Brinear Lario submitted a check in error in the amount of five hundred dollars on September fourth, two thousand and twenty four. Whereas on January twenty, sorry, January third, two thousand and twenty five, Mr. Reese requested a refund of the filing fee he submitted as Brinear and Larios. Submitted the same for the collective lot line adjustment. Now therefore be resolved the request that the town issue a refund of five hundred dollars to Mr. Reese. All those, wait a second.
You're making a motion.
Wait a second. All those in favor? Okay, Maggie. Send a voucher. Or whatever.
Yep.
What planning board chair?
Yeah, I don't think you're. A lot of it keeps bouncing.
Are you doing planning chair?
It says planned board chair. No, not that one.
Plan chair. So so it's, I don't think, so it's planning. Chair at town of Hurley dot org.
I thought it was planning board chair. Planning chair. Now, who else is gonna get this?
Mike. Yeah, I just wanna say something. I I like all of you guys that have account early email address. Yeah, and the only reason is because if you keep your own personal address, you can afford to fire a cat before.
Is that what?
Your 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 personal email account.
No, so why do you guys have personal emails if you're using it? And that can be for. So things are, I would like to, like, we can do that. We can have each one of you an email address.
And what you can do, just so that everybody's like, you can have your account of Hurley email address automatically forward to whatever.
Can I help you? Hi. Do you know what time they open tomorrow? The clerk's office. Oh, okay, the doors closed by.
Yes, it's closed. Yeah, they have hours.
Yeah, nine o'clock. The town email, which I I guess is a good idea, how should we go about that? Will somebody, Maggie set it up for us?
Consultants will set it up. So the question is, does everybody want like their first initial? Probably just your first initial last day and have count of her, you know, count of Hurley dot org.
If it ends up as too much, I have suggested like Ray's gonna set up his own, he's gonna set up his own app, like, you know, Ray dot Palmer. Dot Hurley Gmail, are completely separate, so that it's only.
No, it's not. It it it's account policy is going to be that everybody has their own email.
What's it gonna be? It's gonna be first. So somebody from the town will.
We'll do that, yeah, we'll set it up. And what we'll, what we'll do is we'll email it to you on your personal account. So you can do also, or do a personal account.
You also need to send us the log credentials today. Yeah, we'll set it up.
Duo, you have to download Duo to be able to, it there there's things. So there's security features. Security features.
So, okay, so. Thank you, Mike. So so everybody. Hope you're on the phone.
No, no, it's who's calling.
Oh, Carl Ruckner at townofhurley.org doesn't work.
No, no, he's not. He's K S P C.
No, I I have it in here. I don't know what came on that you can hear.
You have it as vice chair, I think, right?
I don't have any. Yeah, you have always had it. If you go into, you can find an email from me and just check the file all, you know, show you what we've been, and. Attack you. All right, we'll send it. Tracy, planning chair, Carl Dennis Griff, who else didn't get this? Ray, Janet. Ray, um, Martin, Janet, Briggs. I think that's it, okay, so that's, this is our suggested revisions to the description of Maggie's order. I sent it to you.
So, and, and then we'll work through taking that.
Oh, fuck, I'm losing my personal, I'm sorry.
Like starting talk, working.
Yeah.
Down, I did, I did a, I mean, I have to take Maggie's lot line, but I generated a lot line adjustment form. Very simple. I don't know how it compares to the town, but I gotta hold that one up. Uh. And then Debbie looked at it, made a couple of suggestions, same thing, we'll pass them out, everybody can look at them. Um.
I see that.
So we, we. I heard, we're just five lots of division. What, I mean, I don't understand or know your process, so. So from my standpoint, clearly there are gonna be things that we're gonna want Nelson both involved. I don't know if that five lots subdivision is one, to me, it predominantly requires an engineer, because you're gonna be looking at the the swift, the, the board of health approvals, the road cuts. Um. What would you normally, I mean, and, and we can all generally work through, yeah, yeah.
Well, we normally do it to do planner, so the planner would have a list, one to list of anything that is required for a major subdivision in accordance with the laws and codes.
So, but the code defines what's required by the subdivision, and the, uh, the engineer thing is, has to submit to us. If there's something on that subdivision, we don't have to double do it. If it's something with like plantings and that.
Are you on ACIP?
Absolutely, I am.
You are.
Also ACIP.
Exactly.
Okay, but so.
They, they take the hit if something happens, because they are certified. They just plan it. An engineer is not necessarily certified and planning.
It's not planning, he's not gonna be planning.
So, okay, so this, so why don't we, so maybe this is, alright, so this is also where I was saying, where I, there's distinctions between, and, and cases. I just did this one.
A plan.
A pla, a planner, right? To me, having, is, is about the layout, about the design of concept. Traditionally. Planners also have now broached more into zoning code. But it's about what you, about the, what you wanna do in terms of maintaining your character, the community, what your standards are. Interpreting, it can be interpreting your code, but then also that's where you have an attorney, and there's some overlap. When it comes to the, the actual physical development of a site. Traditionally, it's an engineer, because they're looking at road cuts, the drainage, the swift. The wetlands, so.
The crown of the road, it's all the engineering.
Those are different engineering things, there, there is clearly overlap where certain things can be done by different people.
If someone influenced with a planned development of like forty-five townhouses.
Then I was.
That would definitely be a plan, this is just boxes and rows.
Would it make sense to have the engineer, and then, you know, do, do everything I should suggest, because I would agree. But at, when we get to like the very last stage. Repair planner for, to, to review everything, to review the final site plan and everything.
But, but you only need it if there's, you would only need it if there's something like a design feature that you would be wanting a planner to review in mind.
You'll be getting the, the same checklist that we used to get from the planner, from the engineer. You, you know, put this on the drawing, put this on the drawing, this is missing, this, but what they will give you is the crown on this road is too steep, or it's gonna, the drainage isn't gonna work. So, but at the end of the process, they would get, as I'm talking as the.
Alright, well, let me, let me ask you another question. Has the new comprehensive plan been, like, officially instituted? I know, that's it, that's it, no. Okay. Because a lot of this, where we go, where, you know, we, we're supposed to be looking at the comprehensive plan to make sure that it adheres to, but the comprehensive plan is old.
So, okay, but.
It would be nice to have that.
So legally, you have to do it conforming to two thousand and six.
Right, yeah.
So, so when you're looking at the comprehensive plan from a planning or from a legal perspective. Here. You have. And this is in, what's the, the lot, the minimum lot size here is four acres, right? So you have a minimum four acre lot size requirement here, right? The question that becomes is, is the is the submission as it's provided legal, it comply, does it comply with your zoning? And, and normally, like in a site plan, or in a special news, or when you're looking at a large development, that's where you're gonna be talking about how it complies with your your comprehensive plan, because the reality is your comprehensive plan says you wanna preserve your, you know, you wanna preserve your start, and you wanna preserve your, um, natural resources.
Vegetation.
Vegetation, but that's all, but that's all sort of falling in on a, on a small, you know, this is a major subdivision, it still is a relative, it's a small subdivision. You're not, um, you're not gonna be able to use your comprehensive plan, let's say, to strong arm an applicant and say, we want you to reduce this from five lots to four lots. You could say, if the engineer or our planner were to say your, your slope exceeds X percent, you're, you have a wetland, and we were to look at it and say, the area that can be developed on this site is restricted because of the site conditions, that's when you can change and modify the, the density, right? But by law, they're entitled to a minimum, you know, or of four acres. So unless their site constraints are substantial, you're not gonna you know, we're gonna modify. And, and Debbie's right, if you had a forty-five lot subdivision, then you're, then you're talking about the traffic flow, the, where the plantings are doing, you know, where you're putting in plantings, and, and whether you're doing rain gardens. And there's a lot of things that then a planner would get involved in. And.
When, when is the, I'm, I'm sorry, when, when is the new comprehensive plan gonna?
They're talking about, uh, June.
Okay.
June or the.
The reason I ask is like, I hate, I don't wanna go back to the two thousand and six one and, and like, commit it to memory and like, he, he made myself very.
The truth is, on a standard five lot subdivision, the comp plan doesn't even, if there's some really whacked out features, like there's three and a half acres of burnout pool on a ten acre site, then you gotta, was the comp plan say about the stir, but really the comp plan is not a factor in a small routine subdivision.
The comp plan's not gonna change the number of, um, acres per house.
I don't see anything, and it triggers, at least at the onset, some review of the comp plan. If anything, and you hire a planner, I don't think she's even gonna look at the comp plan, she'll look at, you know, the excavations.
It would be, well, it was my understanding of the comprehensive plan, because like, at the planning board, we have some discretion, because it's, it's kind of like, when we had a, a solar array. And I was addressing, that it's like, our comprehensive plan encourages the use of renewable energy.
Yes.
So that's the type of thing that's on there, there may not be a code, but that's part of the comprehensive plan, which gives us some discretion, right? So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not talking about the comprehensive thing, because what would have been, been about there is when that law was created, where you have massive layers review for small backyard residential solar array project, to me, that's not the plan, the comprehensive plan of oh six. I, I, I was on that committee that formulated that law, and I was dead set against it. I resigned the committee because I felt the law was inappropriate.
Whi, which law? The, the solar race exit, the sound check, two ten seventy-one.
Right.
I was on that committee.
Are you taking that problem?
The only time I ever butted heads with John Perry, he was supervisor, and I said, John, this law is poor. It's not a good spin I can put out, I don't even sound so passionate. But you brought the point up, and I agree with you a hundred percent. That law to me was not written in accordance with the two thousand and six comprehensive plan, which by the way, was excellent. I thought it was terrific, I didn't.
Yeah, what's happening basically with your plan is, we have a two thousand and six plan, and then there's a two thousand and nineteen plan that wasn't, that was rejected. Coming through, alright, so basically what it is, the two thousand and nineteen plan is actually a extension of two thousand, it's just marginalized and updated more or less. And then, and the new point coming up is going to two, uh, twenty nineteen, updated here more or less. Alright, so basically.
Well, I know we get to, we paid for the big study, and it was all the, you know, questionnaires and all of that.
What happened was, it happened basically was that, uh, that you had the twenty nineteen plan, and then when, uh, Melinda came into office, she stopped it. She, she, you know, that she, she stopped it and went a different direction with it. What's happening right now is they're bringing back the twenty nineteen plan, uh, back into it. You know, this is what Mitch was on the board, uh, with myself, and it's all, like, we worked out the twenty nineteen plan, but for some reason, Melinda just, um, G A sixed it.
She created its own task force.
Right. Right, which is, which is.
Okay.
So we have a plan that's gonna be accepted by, by June, or something, like, for example, it'd be great if, we'll have you in favor, so solar power when you have all those trees, you know, everybody.
Okay. So, we finish our agenda.
Oh, yeah, that's what.
Let's finish, you got that, is that making that fun? So. You have any maps here?
I did.
That, where are they?
Right here.
Let's see, Paul. I'm, we're, we're on, uh.
What we.
Down here.
I will not. Yeah, we have some personal, that we haven't done, so by the way, done.
Lights, all of us. Do I have a motion for a minute? When I have, I have a break.
So I sent in a change to one fourteen twenty-five minutes, because, um. Thank you for the thought. We legalized matching calcium on that day for, um, a, uh, executive session client.
Attorney client.
Attorney client, and that's it. We did not approve matching calcium to be the attorney.
No. That's cool, I have it as a. No, no, I, I thought it, I thought the resolution said it, um.
It was said.
Temporary, temporary.
I, I rarely think he's too good to be a town attorney.
Yeah, no, it was, it was just a temporary.
And then, it was here, he had.
I thought I put a time that he came in.
You put after six fifteen, by.
He was present, and, and it's nobody asked. There was nobody asked.
Okay, I thought there was a vote that there was somebody asked. Wouldn't, okay, so, so whatever, yeah, yeah, change.
That's not my only change, changes that I, I, yeah.
And I have your changes, only those changes to the, to.
So I'll, I'll make a motion, so, uh, supplement it.
All three, all three, okay. I make a motion that we have only one minute to review the time at E.
Sorry.
The Denver, this and the meetings were so close together.
Do we want to second or not?
My second.
Home favorite. Uh, uh.
One attention.
Correspondents. Yes. We would stop planning board, um, about the dumping menu board. And that. Um, that all is already.
Yeah, that's, that was correct.
We had multiple emails, somehow, uh, next door or something, it said to email my, my address if we had complaints. But Dennis, you did also bring up, and this has not happened yet, um, that once it opens, you wanted the whole board to have a copy of.
Well, I thought, so, did you say Paul reviewed it or something? I, I mean, I thought we should review the determination.
Right, but it hasn't opened yet, so you had said that once it opened, you wanted the whole board to kind of have the decision and kind of look at it, and if there were issues, refer them to Paul. Then menu board, they came up after you made that suggestion.
They're so bright.
I got her. So, I, I don't know if that's still your suggestion.
That was correct.
Well, what was, what was.
What was correct about it?
It was.
Well, what did they do? Because it's still the same.
Uh, it was an email exchange, when I had a formal complaint, I actually went out in pretty temperatures that night, took light heater reading. I reviewed it against the photometric plan. Notified him that he was ten tons bright to say a question of where the light was coming from, the overhead lights on the, on the canopies over the driveway, and they told the menu. This was one reading was closer to the menu board, but in the shadow of the curb, yet it was still brighter, so by default, that meant that the menu boards were too bright. So they did, did the boards, and they put them on timers. I'm not gonna go back out at night until it warms up to about ten degrees. If they're still above the meetings, and, and the, the overlay was, was excellent, the foot handles, you guys didn't approve for any kind of real lighting, it was very low. So if they exceed it.
Okay, so what's, that's already been addressed, all.
Enforcement.
Yeah, 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 okay, good. Dennis, I went back there like the other day, and it was much, uh. Well, I'll see next time I drive by, because they have been like.
Well, let me know, let me, let me know, I, I, I value whichever side you drive, let me.
They actually opened that.
No.
Well, I got a text, that was, I was texting, he asked me earlier, no, it's worth, it's worth. They approved it, they just haven't granted the permit and signed it. That's what I was getting text. That was.
Just even today, you had emailed me and asked me if anybody put in an application since last Friday. And I said to you, no, but then as I, I was going up in my emails, um, there is a request from right here. Um, Gil, um, Clebbins, to, that he would like a, um, a workshop meeting. Um, and it's, he's asking if he can split a particular lot. And I had sent it to Paul, who replied to him, and, um, suggested that he could schedule a workshop meeting, and he replied saying he would like to. So. I don't, that's, I don't have, I just have a, can I subdivide this property and this?
So is that a board volunteer that's interested in all outline adjustments? Or, uh, sorry, I want lots of them.
So. Are we having, so not having the normal three weeks before, or four weeks before, or two weeks before, three planning board meeting? Like, the, the lead inspector and two board members.
No, that's what I'm asking for, if anybody wants to.
Who wants to go to that meeting, be.
The board member wants to be a lead, liaison.
Having one of the meetings.
So we just talked about.
Send it up on Fridays.
That's a golfing.
No, well, it will be, but, so, it's not the point, the point is, is that I, I have plenty of people that have to.
Alright, the truth is, it's way too preliminary, you know, it's just that, the man may not even proceed for two years if he doesn't at all, like, he was really, I did feel these things, and find out if this is feasible. So it's, it's a little premature, in my opinion.
Okay.
You know, when he reaches out, then we can, we can talk about it.
And I, and I could do it, it's just that.
And he just, but I thought Maggie was saying he did reach out, and then.
Oh, after you emailed it back?
Yeah. I don't even know.
So if anybody is, you know, if the priming morning works for Paul. We're gonna be here at nine. We'll stay, if he wants to come in for a put through.
I would block at the calendar, so I don't have any issues, thank you.
Do you wanna reply to one, Paul, or you?
I, I will, I was in the field, I'll.
Yeah, I know. What I stuck, figured since I saw this, I stuck it on the agenda to.
Okay.
While I had everybody here.
So, so, so at this point, I mean, part of what I'm, you know, hoping with students pre-application conferences, is that somebody will come in. We'll spend twenty minutes with the guy, explain what it is that the process would be if he's gonna do it, because he's not, at this point, hiring a consultant. You know, he doesn't have survey or whatever. And then, and then he'll proceed, but he'll at least have some basic understanding of what it is that the planning board is gonna be looking for, and what he's got to do. So, Maggie, rather than you taking any applications, if somebody reaches out. The first option would be just a very preliminary, like, touch base, if they're, if they're.
Like, did I just something? So, when the person comes to your office for a lot line provision, isn't there a list of what they need?
Yeah, but he's coming before that list, yeah. But that list.
Tell you what's required for everything that I need you.
Yeah.
No, that person.
The answer is no.
Okay. Okay.
I, I give them the link to the subdivision regs, a lot line adjustment, a lot line deletion, it's all defined, and then I let them do their own good deal.
This is the one line, this is the one line.
Was I, was I thought we had something.
Well, I have flow charts, that's it.
That, you know, maybe we could.
That's what we're going to, we're like, we're, we're, we're working there. We're just not like, I'm not, I don't have full time to devote to.
Correct me if I'm wrong, every action the planning board has to take is defining the code and the list of requirements are there. And I'm not going to do the work with the professionals. When that architect came and said, I don't know where it would, how far back from me is Spartan, it's like, read the code. You know, I'm sorry. I mean, it's like, that, it's in the code. So you can tell them it's section, this is the code. If you don't have a computer, I'll freak you out. That's not our job.
That's correct. Finally, you try to help somebody like that, you get held accountable if there's.
Exactly.
And I don't want to be a person that's going to be reading, unless, unless you're going to be there and or somebody that knows the code in and out, because.
Yeah, because they're all.
I'm reading that.
I can't read for the morning.
Okay, no, no, I was just reading the time I was working with.
Okay.
Well, as far as the skeleton, the client that wants to come in and do a visual assessment. He hires a licensed surveyor, architect, engineer, whatever. And they have their own determination where the skeleton is. And they're trying to please their client. And we have another determination. And usually it doesn't matter. And when, when we go to a, a site visit that a skeleton has already been decided by his client and him, he's already counting on where he can put his house.
It doesn't mean he gets.
Sometimes it, it, unless that's picked up, it's, oh, well, it's right here, it's, it's a hundred feet from the print. That don't mean anything.
Didn't work that way to know. We, we checked them on that and we established the new, the.
Right, right. We, we've had other clients that come in that, uh, we went for a site visit. One in particular, I wasn't on. And, uh, the architect went halfway down the mountain a little bit. And said, that's where the skeleton starts. Well, it's, it's, that's not the skeleton.
Not all architects are smart. Not all architects.
The definition, the definition.
There, there needs to be a definition.
Yes.
And there is no.
So the definition is.
So, okay, well, part of what, sorry.
I, I, I really want to, I'm, I'm working this for the town. Okay, this is one of the things that I do well. I, I I use a.
One of the many things.
Military SOPs, okay, standard operating procedures. And, you know, we have the visual assessment, which has the different sections in it. And I've given everybody on the planning board copy, and I said, please bring them back the next meeting, okay, on the fourteenth with any suggestions or recommendations. Because I want to get this thing going. So one of the things that I sent down the email also, I, 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 I don't know if your email's not who I sent it to, but um, that if there's anything that was in the works for the, um, visual assessment as well as if NTV had, uh, I, I, I thought that Bonnie Fransen was, uh, they have a definition of what they perceive as the skeleton. Okay, that we can take and look at, and I, I have that recently code. So I, I'd like to start taking everything and put everything into this visual assessment code. And then get it to you guys so you can review it.
But did you get my email? I don't think this should be done. My email said that this should be done in, in the presence, where like four of us get together with a visual assessment and we go through it together and we have a discussion about, this is kind of weird, degree I do of this. Isolated review of that is not, this is a law. So if, if you want to do a little task course, I'm willing to do that.
Okay, everybody may have a different, uh, idea.
But there has to be one that becomes the law. And that's what we're defining.
But I was going to put it together with everybody's.
And presenting.
Okay, that's, that's.
That's fine. But if you're not going to do it, you're not going to do it, all right?
So I just, I don't want to do it. I don't think it's a kind of thing that's done in isolation by reviewing a, a thing.
No, because we all, we all can review it, okay? We all can review it like, like, like the escrow folder we can review. So once I get this put together with everybody's comments, I take everything, scan everything, I put it in and say, please review.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Please review. And it's, it's in the folder and everybody gets a chance to look at it. And at the next meeting, when we're all together, we can discuss it. Under, under the board time, members' questions, items, we can discuss it. Right? Yeah, that's the time to discuss these.
No, no, no. But all I can say was, I think that all it for me, for me, saying, is that sometimes when we discuss these things in a group, it raises other thoughts and people like, so that's all. I think that that's feeling. So if you're sitting there, you're working on it together in unison as you're going through and you're talking about it. Those are different, potentially different approaches.
No, I think Mitch's approach is, is the right one. Everybody should review it individually so you can absorb it. And then we can talk about it as a group that everybody will then be fully informed.
Yeah, well, I think people are actually comfortable with the visual assessment section. You let them know what you own in your head. Okay, well, then you have to read it beforehand.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, but if you own it and you have your opinion.
Okay, so I have not done a change yet, but I will. Is it my next meeting? Should I send it out or sooner?
I, yes.
Okay, I'm going to make sure I don't.
If you have the scanning capability.
I will take a picture of it.
Yeah.
Okay, I can make sure it's, I take.
It's, it's just a style. So Mitch had emailed me and asked me if I had on file other things that had started to be considered to be proposed when I was supposed to make this only task force. And I do have, I print it out as much as I can put my hands on quickly. So I made six copies of the ones, um, I don't know if, you know, so expenses. Special use permit. Uh, site, site plan, visual assessment.
Okay, so then.
Um, and so.
I just want one of those.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and, and I'm going to say, I appreciate that. But I think that we, which is part of why Maggie had worked on more, sort of, the clerk job description. So slightly less than a week ago, but a week ago, you would, I met, or I came into your meeting with, with John Perry. And said there were only two files potentially that still we had not completed the review with the escrow. That to me is priority for Maggie. I mean, the minutes, the escrow. Basically dispersing communications, um, are really priority. And then we, and then we can definitely expand, but until we're in a place that those things are one hundred percent smooth and together, I think there should be absolutely no movement outside of bounds. And I, but I have to defer to the board, so.
I agree with you.
I think I just responded to.
Yeah, but I think I have, I, I have to tell you that in the list of Maggie's jobs, and this is, as I am, I think they're on bold. Um, it says here, the, the secretary reports to the chairperson and to the town supervisor. So you take direction from those two people, actually from this person, because you don't have any control. Maggie, I mean, and if I want to meet with you, I'll ask Tracy to ask you, or she'll say yes. But other than that, if you're going to respond to requests from all of us, you're going to go crazy. So save all that, don't respond to any requests unless it comes from Tracy. Because we really have, I mean, the fact that we have minutes that are late, that there, you know, and, and we're finding out, we have record, old record, broken record. There's urgent things that haven't been done. Minutes are urgent. Escrow is urgent. If those two things are done, then you have a little bit of Tracy, what should I do? Okay, but a, as far as minutes for three months.
So we need to email the chair with requests.
If you have a request for something, then one of the answers, Tracy, yes. Paul said be a letter saying, can you please just give it to the, the group? I didn't have anybody's email. I asked Tracy, do you want me to? Because unless there's one controlling force, it's chaos. Not that there's, it just, it's chaos. So I, I, that's what I believe is the way you should want it. I'm not the only one.
But she didn't have an email address at the time, that's why I said.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I don't want you to send it to me, but I didn't send it out because we knew that it was. But I also want to know where the hell is that contact list? We have, we get it? The contact from all of our contacts and permissions?
They, they told Maggie that there were some errors. I don't know what the errors were, so.
And I've gotten a couple of corrections.
Okay, great.
So I'm not, but I wanted to wait until after the meeting tonight to do what I believe is the final list.
I think you are incredibly valuable employee, but I think you need to be direct as far as priorities. Because we have needs that aren't being met, okay? That you can't write easily. Don't give me that little face that you're giving me. I, I, if I, if I ever see more than one month of minutes that's not done, you're going to hear me exposed.
But Debbie, the, the, the minutes were done, Meg. The meetings were three weeks apart, and this is the first meeting we've had since then.
The minutes were done. So we should go home tomorrow, you should work on the minutes, and then you go out and draft for us to review.
That's all. I have minutes to do. I have two weeks by law to do it.
No, 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 you don't work for the Uber. Okay, I'm sorry, I don't want to. No, 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 just, no.
Debbie's right. And that's why we're having this conversation. I mean, the, by law, you have two weeks. And, and believe me, I am not, I am not going to be the kettle that, that, you know, calls the pot flat because I had a difficult time when I was in the clerk's office getting anything out, but it is a boring. I'm sorry, but it's a needed and necessary. And that's so, I'm not saying it's, but I'm just saying I had a difficult time getting them out timely, so I'm not, but to me, the escrow is paramount. There's a, there's a, there's a reason that I had put my name in the hat for this position, and that was clearly one of them. And then the reorganization there, and, and I don't know whether, I don't know where this comes from, so, but I, this is my. Maggie drafted a resolution so that this board can refund five hundred dollars for a double payment. To me, it's a three-line resolution. Do you know an overpayment or a repayment? Please refund, you know, please issue a refund. Thank you. We don't. We need, doesn't need the, a fifteen whereas clause for the return of, of a double payment. So it may be that what we need to work on is how to restructure, reduce, because if you're typing, if you're typing a page and a half on a five hundred dollar refund. I know it would take me, you know, an hour to do this, or an hour, and then, you know, so you have limited time. So we should be focusing your resources on what's needed and on the necessary information that the board wants.
I will also just say, I'm
I'm here to help you, as, as is Mitch and as is Debbie and every board member about how to prioritize.
No, right, and I will get upset, only because there there is, not was, such a gap in accurate information on what has happened on the planning board. Believe me, trying to figure out what happened with a particular subdivision that you did and trying to figure out what happened in the past with it was impossible. Because.
But, 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 but a third occasion set of minutes.
Where are you getting it? It's not your job to do that. You're done with the type of minutes and be a secretary, not to be a planner.
No, it's, no, when I'm asked to find records that belong to this town, that is my job.
Yes, it is.
So, and they were impossible to find because there was no documentation.
What?
So what gets done from you, it's important that there is a historical record. Okay, there is a balance with that. And, but.
But, okay, so, so Maggie, what I'm saying is, is that, and I agree because I do real estate. Deans should tell a story. The title insurance tells the story. Everything, you're right, you need to be able to follow a trail like Hansel and Gretel. But this trail could, is, is sufficient to say applicant X made an overpayment or made a payment here, applicant Y made a payment on, on the same file in error. So therefore.
It's two words. Just, just get to, like, make believe your bullet points. This is one fact, that two, that three, that's it. Your minutes are quite extensive. We have that little owl man for every little word that I've said and anybody said. So your minute should be, we had this, we had this, we had this, because otherwise if they.
That's not legal.
I'm not saying.
Your minutes don't have to, your minutes do not have to be.
Maggie, if you don't want to hear what we're saying and learn, Maggie, if you don't want to hear what we're saying and grow from it, then that's the problem. If you want, if, if there's a problem and we're trying to solve it, and you have to be part of this problem to solve it, okay? My stick is minutes and escrow. I don't care. Everything else that is Eurofined color print is all bullshit until the minutes and the escrow are done. And if you were privately working for me and you didn't do that, you're, you would be out the door. Now, I'm being very stern like you. I don't want you to fly again because I do have to go like you. But this is a clerical job. It's not a planning job. And to, and to give us the things we need, we need a secretary. That's what we need.
So I'm going to take the, so we, we reviewed the maps today that, where we brought it.
Yep.
And Amy Marie's job is screwed up. Oh, my God. And nobody's balls here. Colin had the wrong acreage on the, on one of the lots, and he had the wrong acreage in the, um, table of, of lots. Or Marie was like, can't you just, you know, no, it doesn't get just changed. You have to take it back. But part of my process, because I need to learn this process with this board and the law, was to say to Debbie, okay, here's the map, and she was like, let's decide it. And I was like, no, I want to look back and make sure that it matches your decision because I don't know what your decision was. So Debbie started looking, but we had an eleven or thirteen-page decision, and it wasn't, it wasn't obvious in those eleven pages. We spent a half an hour trying to figure out what the actual lot size was supposed to be.
Yeah, if there's too much information, the real important information gets lost. So write, write a long letter and then go back and review it and check out everything that's explaining. So just eat this whole point, so. And Paul, yes, your, your excuse.
But so. This procedural stuff, I don't need.
You know, when this is fun. Was so. Yeah, very much.
I'm glad that came.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But we need to come up with a way.
Oh, you were happy I came.
And I agree with what you're saying. We need to, we need to be able to follow the trail. But we need to easily be able to follow the trail because it's not going to be us looking at that trail. It's going to be somebody else in ten years. And there's got to be a way of bulletproof bullets and direct, you know, so Debbie and I, and Mitch, I'm sure, and anybody else who's welcome. Everybody else is welcome. We're going to come up with a sort of streamlined template. There should be forms that say, you know, I, I agree that, yes, you know, we can point people into the, the code, but we can grab sections of the code and say, here are all the notes that we need on the map.
And you've all the liability for that, or for nature.
It, it's.
If you, if you own the liability, if you give the notes to an engineer to put in the drawings, you are assumed liability. You're releasing your liability.
No, Debbie, you're saying we could, you can bullet, you can have a, a, you know, just a, a basic instruction sheet. And at the bottom it says, but not limited to, you need to refer to the code.
That's all.
You know, this.
I spent twenty thousand dollars here in my bill of insurance. I cover mine all the time, and I don't supply information that the professional should be regarding, but it's okay.
You know, when you're, I, I agree, like, if you're a resident, you don't just hire, go out and hire, because you don't know when you have to hire somebody. You have to come in and find out what you need to do before you can hire someone.
Look at the code, look at the, yes.
Yes, but, or, or some old lady, you know, doesn't know, she doesn't even have a computer, she can't, you know, she, she needs to come in and get a one. She can then hand it to her grandson and say, come and help me. And so he, he.
So we have a lot of crying, striking the balance.
A lot of no steps.
What's that?
Okay, fine.
Wait, is it striking the balance?
Helping, helping, none, non-educated. A non-educated resident.
That's right.
And, and you're right, we should not be thinking, you know, the person who's paying the, the professional. We're not, we're not looking, I don't think, I'm not advocating that we replace the professional or that we take away.
Yeah, at the end of that review of that subdivision, I wanna have Bonnie give us an opinion on anything, you know, before it gets to far. It might develop in somebody that requires a review, I don't wanna freak.
So, um, Tracy, did you say you revised the determination that we approved today? The one that we voted to accept?
Yeah.
Oh, the only thing I, was the resolution.
So, so did Maggie write that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Maggie's gonna revise it.
No, but, but that one was great. It was two pages. The determination, the ADU.
Yeah.
But they're usually not like that.
No, no, some of them are like. Encephalopeds.
Yeah.
I would think, I do think the whole, I don't wanna put, the whole dumping experience, put a little fear of God, a lot of people that are. Covering their ass a little bit more because they don't wanna get sued.
Okay, what, what's next, let me know?
I don't know, our. No, we're not, uh, my name is on the sheet, I don't go on.
Oh, we got the board time? Oh, wait, we gotta determine a vice chair.
So, and then the question was, I mean, you guys have the theme's maps, I don't know how you, you normally proceed. I mean, I'm not signing, except I think I wasn't here.
Well, I already volunteered for one thing, somebody else can volunteer.
Well, well, and Debbie, yeah, so it has to either be the chair or the vice chair or if Debbie won't.
Oh, no, I'm okay, 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 well, I don't, I'm not, I don't care, but the guy has added more lights around this house, the whole thing glows at night.
And so when Paul gets the signed, signed plan with. If it's out of compliance, then Debbie, you need to let Paul know.
I will, I'm, I'm not shy.
I, you know.
But he hasn't started.
He hasn't started yet, so.
Be hard as ass about it.
Right, well, he's doing light pollution right now. It doesn't matter, he, he, he doesn't have a building permit, he has an approval, but he, well, you know. Once Paul has the signed thing for you guys, then it's enforceable. And until then, he can add all the lights he has.
So.
So I, I'm, I throw a ball, so I'm, I'm gonna be leaking after this meeting, otherwise I would stay at sign.
Okay.
Are you applying signing?
I'll under her grass off sign because I don't want Tracy to sign something that she knows anywhere for.
I mean, I chose, I'll sign them, but I'm not.
I didn't necessarily wanna sign this ethics and disclosure thing without reading it again. So, the, so copy of the ethics and disclosure law should be provided, should have been provided.
It really basically is so bad that.
You know, I mean, I'm sure I could sign it, I know I resign one, but like something might have changed in the last year. That I might need to disclose this.
So just get it to me, because everybody has to sign it once a year. That's, that's. That's just a powerful part of, same thing with contact information, I have to make sure I know how to get it. Every year, I have to make sure.
Okay, let's just finish them and if we do, a alternate member, Ray Tom, remember Tracy Kellof signed, so. Are we gonna determine vice chair, you wanna vote me out?
No.
Make a motion to appoint Debbie goes our vice chair.
Yes, okay.
All favor, I.
Everyone needs to sign this form, co-changes. Okay, that's, that, that's, local low referrals done Wednesday, the next reading. Pre-application meeting with Baxter and State Holdings, is that who we met?
Yep.
Okay. And Gil Clemons. Board member questions.
Oh, wait, yeah, can I, before you make it, I asked you to hold on that, um, just because this was my first meeting. Did I push you guys through things that you didn't wanna be pushed through? Was it okay? What, tell me like where. So like engage certain things?
Yeah, and.
I, I think change is good. I think we got through some things quicker than we would have in the past, so.
We're getting enough times on there, we never full of it.
I know.
So the only thing you need to have times on is for a public hearing, a panel for the public hearing before the time on the agenda, it, it just has to be.
Applicants ask when they are supposed to be here, so, so don't, you know, do it just for the.
Yeah, maybe just, just for the big.
I'm gonna start this because I, I wanna go home. No, I, I really need to.
Oh, right.
I need to know what I'm supposed to get from Baxter. Like.
Money, right, now they're.
Five thousand dollars.
There is no wire mark for a visual assessment.
Oh, what am I doing this time?
A confirmation from them that they've staked out everything. So, so that we could do the visual assessment.
Thirty-five blocks, yeah.
Did you, did you hear me? Yes, that they're ready for us.
Okay.
Prior to you setting it up.
Anything else? And when, so you didn't classify it tonight, you expect maybe next month you'll classify it, classify it.
Yeah.
Underseater. They built a part one of the law.
Engineer.
Okay, so the only other, the last thing, just in terms of, um. So Maggie, because you have very specific tasks, because I have been in this building. I really ask that you pretty much like limit your chatter time, because you got a very limited. Do you wanna come in and chatter, do it on your own time outside the building because everybody's working? And you've gotta get your work done. And that's a priority. Right now. Anybody wanna comment to that, very regret, I'm probably up on Debbie's direct. Don't, don't hang it out, anybody's off to more than.
Thirty seconds. Unless you have. Maybe I should be directly to you. And after the signal, you know, point of contact or anything.
I expect Mitch's marshalship to be there.
We have one I'll look at the webpage because that's also gonna be getting updated.